I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just to announce at the start of the meeting, the town council meeting is being aired live via Facebook Live through YouTube, but I know there's a little connection problem that they're working on. So if you are trying to watch through YouTube, please be patient. The connection is coming. I do not have any specific condolences to share with any of any veterans that passed since our last meeting, so I'll just ask for a moment of silence for all deceased veterans of Bridgewater, Thank you. Let's see. No minutes to approve from last meeting. Debbie, no meeting minutes to approve? Okay. So no meeting minutes to approve. The only announcement I'll still make as an extension from the last meeting is for any particular people interested in applying for the appointment to the empty council seat, you have until December 10th to submit in your letter of intent and potential resume to the town council secretary, and we'll be entertaining those at a future meeting. We do not have any proclamations this evening, so we will move to citizens' open forum. And again, due to mass open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during the comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If you come up, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your response to three minutes or less.
Three minutes. I can't get away from this place. Ray Jamian Aldrich Road. I'm speaking to your item on the agenda of the density bonuses for Central Business District, and I speak as a past member of the planning board. I was on the planning board for 12 years, and I resigned last January. And I'm not speaking for the planning board, per se. I'm speaking for myself here. And I might only make two points. One regarding the density bonuses, which are perfectly, we've been, we've had them for years. They're proper. I just want to make a point that if you allow changes in a density bonus, you be very careful about what you allow. If the town feels that, for instance, 18 units or 16 units are the proper density for Central Business District for units, that means that supposedly we've gone through some trouble and thought why 16 units is proper, traffic and so forth. If you increase it, if you give density bonuses of allowing the developer to increase it to, say, 18 or 20, that's okay. But my point is, we should get something major in return. For instance, if solar is one of the density bonuses, which it always has been, maybe solar should be simply be part of the procedure and not a bonus. Maybe they should be required to put solar on roofs of certain size. My only point is, be careful about changing density bonuses and giving developers minor things to do in order to get two or three more units into a development. Secondly, this is related to, but not the same thing. I was on the board when the past Broad Street project came before the planning board. And before it was presented to us, the developer with the past head of community economic development and the town manager, I believe, came to this board, and he worked out a developer's agreement, which is entirely proper. The problem I had with it, again, I'm speaking for myself, was it was then presented to the board, almost as if a done deal, where the planning board is the responsible board for all development, not you, not the town manager. The planning board is. And my feeling, I believe some others felt, we were now pressured to accept an agreement that was already sort of worked out. My feeling is, the proper way to do it, which is the Perkins property, which has been approved, Perkins developer came before the planning board with simply an idea, no plans, and we talked about it for a number of sessions where things were changed, and then the plans were presented. And my only point is, I believe that is the way it should be done. As much as developer's agreements are proper, I'm suspicious of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Maybe else like to come up and speak? Come on up.
James Wall, 60 Crescent Street. Wanted to speak a little bit on the senior village housing ordinance that was up for your action tonight. Wanted to say that I was in support of that. My family has been in town for generations, and I've seen firsthand how really important it is to enable our families and our citizens to be able to have homeownership opportunities where they can age in place and stay with their communities. But I did want to urge you, before passing it, to make an edit first. I believe I wrote to some of you. I believe there's a loophole in the way that the ordinance is currently written that will enable developers to get all of the incentives of the ordinance without giving the full benefits back to the town. And to explain that, I'll just quickly summarize the overview here. The stated purpose is not only to, you know, provide homeownership opportunities for folks who are 55-plus, but also to provide for development that conserves woodlands and open space and other environmental features in town. So how is it doing that? It's doing it through two things. One is a buffer zone, so this takes the existing setback that's required for all subdivisions and makes it into a no-touch buffer zone, so preserves any woodland that might be there. The other thing that's really key is that it mandates an open space preservation area. So this is a percentage of the developable lot that is reserved from development, and in exchange for that, developers in some zones get a 25% density bonus. They can build 25% more housing units otherwise than they would otherwise be able to. The loophole here is due to two details in the current ordinance, the way it's written. One is that the open space preservation area percentage mandate is inconsistent across zones. So for residential A, B, and C, it's 40%, but it drops down to 20% for residential D. The second detail that contributes to this is that the buffer itself, that setback buffer, is excluded when you calculate the developable land of the parcel. So that, what that means is that that land and that buffer will now contribute back to the open space preservation area. So if you take, you know, your typical, like, seven-acre residential District D lot that's specified in this, that buffer is going to be about 15 to 25% of the lot. So the developer already meets the requirements of the open space preservation area without actually creating an open space preservation area, just with the buffer zone. This buffer, you know, it is wooded, but it is an existing setback for subdivision, so they're really not giving that much extra to get that density bonus. So my suggestion to amend it would be to standardize that requirement to 40% across all zones, A, B, C, and D, and potentially even consider increasing that to 50 to 60% to account for that buffer zone being included. I know that might sound like a lot, but if you look at our existing open space conservation development, that requires 60% common land for all lot sizes across all residential zones, and doesn't even offer a density bonus. So I think it's a pretty fair trade. Thank you for hearing him out. Appreciate all your service to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anybody else want to come up and speak? Please, come on up.
Julie Caulfield, Laurel Drive. I would like to propose to the town, and I'm not sure where this landed last time, that the town purchase a flagpole solely designated to fly the POW flag adjacent to the American flag as authorized by Congress. This would reserve the primary flagpole for the American flag and any special interest flags to be flown periodically beneath it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Go once, go twice. All right. Thank you very much for those that came up to speak.
Mr. President.
Hold on a second.
Yep.
We're skipping, so appointments, we have none. And the next thing up?
I'd like to take item H, presentations out of order.
Okay. We have a motion to take item H out of order. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindy. All those in favor of taking item H, presentations out of order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will go to item H, presentations. We have some trophy presentations to be made from the Trittown Veterans Day Parade, and we do have our veterans' agent Greg Martin here to make their presentation. So, Mr. Martin, I will give you the floor.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Perry. Thank you to the other council members for allowing us the opportunity to recognize these great groups here. The Veterans Day Parade, the Trittown Veterans Day Parade would not be possible if we didn't have folks that came out and volunteered to march in the parade. We've got three fine groups here tonight that we want to give some trophies to, and these three groups really exemplify all of the groups that came out and marched in the parade on November 11th to honor the veterans of Bridgewater. And I personally want to thank them for coming out and marching in the parade and really putting their best foot forward, I guess, no pun intended. So the first award is to the best marching unit, which will be awarded to the Bridgewater-Ranham High School Band. And here we have Mr. Quinn Daly and Ms. Kayla Nesbit to accept the award. Come on up. Maybe we can do a quick photo after, Dr. Perry?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay, great. All right. Okay, so next we have best float, and that will go to the Fire for Effect Foundation. And here we have Aliserta to receive that award. And lastly, we have our judges' choice award, and that will go to Pat Snow's Dance Academy. And here to accept the award is Michaela Cootie. Again, thank you to those folks. And the Trittown Parade was a resounding success, and again, a testament to the folks who came out and presented the town very well.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you to those who just received the awards. Why don't we have you guys come up with, Mr. Martin, we'll take a picture here in the front. I always like to start meetings off with awards. That's great. Like that, like that. All right. So we will go back to item F now, hearings, starting off with Order OFY-25-023, FY 2025 Classification Tax Allocation: Adoption of a Residential Factor. This was advertised in the Enterprise, 11/22. Finance Committee voted 5-0 at their meeting to approve this. Budget and Finance?
3 to 0 to approve.
Very good. So we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time at 7:16. I will actually ask Shelley McCauley to go over her presentation for this.
Okay. Good evening. I guess we won't be presenting it by PowerPoint, so I'll do the best I can.
Okay.
Tonight, I will be presenting the selection of a minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2025. The actions required before setting the tax rate include determine the maximum amount it can levy under Proposition 2 and 1/2, establish the final values for all taxable real and personal property, decide its property tax policies, and each of these actions must be documented on forms that must be submitted to and approved by the DOR. The levy limit is the maximum a community can levy each year equal to last year's levy plus 2 and 1/2% plus new growth plus any override or exclusions. Levy limit 2024 was $53,913,997. 2 and 1/2% of that is $1,347,860. Add new growth for fiscal year 25 was $963,349, for a total of $56,225,606. Debt exclusion this year was $4,682,467, which brings a total of $60,908,073. The final values were submitted and approved to the DOR on November 21st, 2024. The total value of the town is $5,146,634,110. And tonight, the municipality must hold a public hearing before it makes any decisions on the tax rate options. You have to decide the tax policies. Single or multifamily tax rates, an open space discount, a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption. For the presentation tonight, only the decision to adopt a single or a split tax rate will be discussed. In order to select a residential factor, the town council must decide the percentage of the tax levy each class will bear. A residential factor is adopted to determine the percentage of the tax levy to be paid. The adopted factor cannot be less than the minimum factor calculated by the DOR. If a factor of 1 is adopted, the tax rate would be the same for all classes. Then I have calculation options, and it was shifted from 1 to 1.50 at 5% increments. This year residential percentage of value is 85.10. Commercial, industrial, personal property percentage of value is 14.90. As I said before, the value of the town is $5,146,634,110, and the levy is $60,884,681. For an example, if you were to shift 5%, it would increase the average commercial industrial property tax burden by $674 and decrease the residential burden by $59. Then I included tax rates and tax shifts for the neighboring communities of East Bridgewater, Halifax, Middleborough, Ranham, and West Bridgewater. Some considerations for classification concerning economic and political issues would be, will an increased tax burden on the SIF classes significantly lower the residential tax burden? How much is big business versus small business, the mom-and-pop stores? Will it adversely affect small businesses and drive them out of the community? Will it slow big business development? And is the timing proper for the move to a multiple tax rate? If the estimate, if we did an estimated single rate, the average single-family impact would be 5.9%. A value increase from fiscal year 24 of $560,826 versus fiscal year 25 of $593,992. It would be a 3.2% tax bill increase from fiscal year 24, which was $6,808 versus $7,027 for fiscal year 25. That is a $219 increase from fiscal year 24 to 25, and the prior year was a $112 increase from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24. If it was an estimated single rate, the average commercial impact would be a 10% value increase from fiscal year 24 of, which was $1,039,527 versus fiscal year 25, $1,143,575. It's a 7.2% tax bill increase for fiscal year 24, which was $12,620 versus $13,529 for fiscal year 25. That would be a $909 increase from fiscal year 24 to 25, and the prior year was a $1,737 increase from fiscal year 23 to 24. Additional information that you need to consider, it's, the debt is approximately 77 cents of the tax rate. Historically, the town has always maintained a single tax rate. The maximum levy limit is $60,908,73. The levy is $60,884,681. So your excess capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated at $23,391,47, and the excess capacity for the prior year is calculated at $41,827,83.
That's some tight numbers. All right. We'll start off by asking if there are any general questions from the public at this point in time. Seeing none. Anyone from the public speaking in favor? And anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Seeing none. I'll ask any town council members, any questions for Shelley regarding the report?
Mr. President?
Ms. Allenberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question, and this may be very silly, but I thought we had a 2 and 1/2% limit on increases. So I'm missing the boat, apparently. Why are we at 7% increase and a 5% increase?
It's a 2 and 1/2% increase on the levy limit from the prior year.
Okay. So that does not translate per household?
Correct.
As a 2 and 1/2%?
Mm-hmm.
Ah. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Shelley, I have a couple of questions. So when you say residential, that's our home, our apartments, multifamilies?
Yes. Anyone in one class.
And personal property? So that's like a shed or a pool that I have on my property?
Only if you run a business.
Oh, so it's only for businesses?
Mm-hmm. Business, personal property.
Okay. The other thing is, we're going to be having the accessory units, you know, those little units we can start building? I think they call it the accessory units, that you can build like 900 feet, you can build a little apartment?
AEDs.
What are they called?
AED houses, I think.
Dwelling units. The accessory?
Accessory dwelling units.
And then more on the apartment.
Apartment or something? Apartment buildings. You want to know what class they're in?
No, they're going to be, they're dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units will still fall under residential.
Yes.
Even though it's not attached. So they'll be taxed that way.
Yep.
Okay. And what is considered open space property?
We don't have any in town.
We don't have any. And I think I have one.
I think there's only three communities in all of Massachusetts that have open space discount.
So do any of the developers have applied or used the tax increment finance, the TIF?
Has they, have they what?
Developers asked for it or used it?
Asked for what?
The TIF, the tax increment finance.
Oh, that's something that the town decides.
Yeah.
That's not something that...
Yeah.
So you don't, wouldn't know?
We don't have...
That's not part of figuring out the tax rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is simply the value of all property, and then how much we've committed in spending over the year goes into determining what the tax rate is.
Oh, I thought I could ask the question, because then they saved their tax. Okay. I'll bring that up another time. And the last thing is, with all our development, do you think it's a good time for us to keep the single one? Where most of our development is residential and not commercial?
All I can say is historically, we have not had a split tax rate. And right now, we're at 85%. And we, we have gone from 88% in 2002 to 85% in 2025. So we are at the lowest right now that the residential class has ever had to pay.
Okay.
So we're 85% of the levy.
All right.
Commercial class pays 85% of the levy.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Mr. Lindy?
I just want to thank Shelley for the presentation at Budget and Finance earlier and for this tonight. I do have a question, though. It's great to have all this information very well explained to us. I'm going to ask, going forward, if there's a way that we can get our technology working, so when people view the meetings, they can see the numbers that Shelley's talking about. We have the luxury of seeing this, but I would like to see if we can get that fixed going forward.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Any other councils have any questions? Seeing none. All right. I will close the public hearing at this time, which is 7:28. And I would entertain a motion from the council to set the tax rate, single tax rate at 1.
Second.
Ms. Riggle's second by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve. All those in favor of setting the tax rate at 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you again, Shelley, for the presentation. We do not have any licensed transactions this evening, which brings us to Town Manager's Board. Does the town manager have anything that she wanted to address this evening?
There were a couple of things to follow up on, but since we just had a meeting last Tuesday, we had a holiday in between, I'm going to update you at the next meeting.
Sounds fine to me. Thank you very much. We do not have any discussions scheduled for this evening. Committee reports. I'll ask if anyone has a committee report they'd like to share. Council Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just with respect to the Rules and Procedures Committee, we did meet last evening in consideration of Ordinance D-FY-25-009, which is on our agenda for this evening. That is the Veterans Volunteer Services Program. After a lengthy discussion and consideration, the committee voted by a vote of 3 to 0 to continue the matter until a further meeting, which we anticipate at this point to take place next week. There were certain questions that arose that we actually are seeking clarification on from the Department of Revenue. Shelley has actually offered to intercede on our behalf and to consult, I think, believe it's tomorrow, actually, consult with DOR to get some further information for us.
Okay.
So we won't be acting on that on the agenda tonight.
So we'll postpone that. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other? Mr. Murphy?
Just a quick update on the next town manager ad hoc search group. We will meet Thursday, December 19th at 7:30 PM via Zoom, and that will be posted to the town website. So Thursday, the 19th at 7:30 PM via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Can that be posted as a full council meeting?
I believe we could do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Am I allowed to ask a question to a chair?
Sure. What is the question?
Do you know if we all reached out to Bernie and did our interviews?
Yeah, he did confirm that all councils have met.
All right, thank you.
Ms. McKinnon? All right. We're moving on to legislation for action. First up, Ordinance D-FY-25-001, the Proposed Zoning Order Amendment, Senior Village Housing Development. This was reviewed by the Planning Board and the CEDC and voted to recommend with amendments as listed in your packet. I do know some recent information is come about as well. I did get some response on those questions from Mr. Rulie, but again, I just got that this morning. So this is up for advertising, which again, we can, once it's up for advertising, it comes back as a hearing, and we can vet it out at that point in time, so I can get all that information out to councils between now and then. So what I would still suggest, based on what Planning Board and CEDC did, is ask for a vote to send to advertising at this point in time and a second for discussion. And like I said, we'll vet out this ordinance when it comes back to a hearing in front of us, once we can get all the information that's been recently revealed in the past day or so. So do I have a motion at this point to send advertising?
Make a motion to send advertising.
Second for discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Does anyone have any questions on that at this point in time?
Yeah. I do, Mr. President, thank you. I actually had a series of comments I wanted to make on this. I actually had a series of comments I wanted to make on this particular item. Is it appropriate to make those comments now in light of the advertisement that will be coming up?
Again, we're having a discussion on it, so if you want to bring up some items, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Okay. Mr. Lindy raised his hand also. I don't know if you have a quick question?
No, go ahead.
I noticed that under Item 3, it says that the Planning Board reserves the right at its sole discretion to impose more stringent standards due to public water and sewer capacity. I would like to know, what progress are we making on our water and sewer at this time so that this can even be voted upon?
Well, we've gone through the presentations before on water and sewer, we were all made privy to. They're just stating that based on where we're standing as a town on water and sewer, they would make a determination if they could go forward based on capacity of water and sewer. So they would take that into consideration.
I noticed that the, there's going to be ownership of the preservation area and establishment of a homeowner's trust and association. Who would be managing the homeowner trust or association? Do you have any idea?
That would be up to however the, this development would be set up at the time, and that obviously would be reviewed at the time when they were submitting it for approval. So again, I can't...
So you have no advance information at this time?
We don't have any particular project that this is referring to. This is just setting up the steps to go forward if one were to come through.
Okay. I see that there is also limitations on the, or rather, not limitations, but rather bonuses that can be gotten for the buffer zone and that sort of thing. And I think that we should take Mr. Ajamiyan's advice at 16 units per parcel.
He was just speaking as a number. It wasn't in particular referencing this. He was just speaking as an example.
In general, yes, however it happens to apply to this. So that concludes my comments for now. Thank you.
All right. So just to answer your question on that, that's some of the questions that's been raised recently through an email that was received, actually, by Mr. Walsh, who spoke earlier on that. So we're looking to vet that information out. Any other questions? Mr. Lindy.
So I just wanted to know, we'll get updated on this?
Yes. Like I said, I just, like I said, I got an information from Mr. Rulie today, based on a question on this situation. So I will get that out to all the councils through the council clerk, so all the councils have that information. But we can, again, this will go to a hearing in a future meeting, so this will all be vetted out at the meeting, and certainly we get Mr. Rulie to speak upon it as well.
Okay. My other question is, with Council Robinson resigning her seat, who is the Chair of Community and Economic Development Committee for this council?
That we'll have to address. Nothing, nothing's been done at this point.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just have a question on procedure. If we, if this goes to a hearing, which it will, are we permitted to make amendments?
Yes.
At the hearing itself?
Yes. And if we do make, if we do make any changes, then it would have to be re-advertised and then voted on after the advertising.
So that locks us in, basically, too, if we want to expedite to accept what is here. Okay. So we would have to republish the entire article, not...
We would just, we would have, well, we would have to re-advertize whatever changes were made.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Ms. Strigles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give some clarity to Council Ellenberg's question about how the homeowner's trusts typically work in new development. So most of the builders take ownership of managing HOA until it's turned over to the town in some capacity, and then it's typically turned over to the owners. So the owners would then have the ability and the right to hire a private firm if they chose to, a private property management company, or they might think that an in-house person is more capable, given that type of housing and it being over 55. So just to gain some clarity, that it usually is handled in multiple different steps.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles, for the information.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending this advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, zoning ordinance DFY-25-003, Proposed Amendment to the Central Business District, CBDS, Regarding Density Bonuses. This was sponsored by Council McGrath. It was sent to Planning Board in CEDC, who voted not to recommend the ordinance at this time. Ms. McGrath, did you want to, what would you like to do with your ordinance here?
Was it withdrawal?
Yes.
That, yeah.
Okay. So you make a, you'd like to withdraw it at this time? So we will have that withdrawn and move on. Next up, Item C, Proposed Ordinance DFY-25-006, Bridgewater Town Charter Amendment for Gender Neutral Language. Rules and Procedures voted to recommend this at their 11/13 meeting. This was introduced by Council Murphy, so I'll refer to Council Murphy in regard to this ordinance.
Not too much additional to add, just replacing the word "his" that appears several times in reference to "their," just to make it a gender neutral when referring to both the Town Manager position and term limits.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So again, we're just looking for a motion to send this to advertising and a second for any discussion. Most by Ms. Strigles, second. So Lindy, any discussion on the item? Seeing none, then, I'll ask for a vote to send to advertising. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think Council Ellenberg had some...
I'm sorry, did you have a question, Ms. Ellenberg? Nancy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Strigles. I would be proposing an amendment for this. Is it permissible to discuss?
We had a second for discussion, so please go ahead and discuss.
Okay. What is already in the charter, I understand, is the words "anyone finally convicted of a criminal offense involving misconduct in any elective or point of public office, trust or employment at any time held by him or her shall be deemed to have vacated offices and not be eligible to serve in any other elective or point of office or position in the town." Now, I just think that involving misconduct type of thing is, could be used in an abusive way, and it could be rife for abuse. And I just think that language should simply be omitted from the charter as long as we are changing the other things that Mr. Murphy has proposed as well.
So are you making that as a motion?
I would like to make that as a motion, yes.
So what is your motion?
To omit the language from "any" finally convicted, all the way to the words "position in the town."
So that entire last sentence?
Sentence, I guess, yes.
Could I ask?
Yes.
Clarification through you to the Town Attorney. Does that fundamentally change that sentence in the charter? I mean, gender neutral is one thing.
I didn't hear her proposed amendment.
Okay.
I was speaking with the Town Manager.
So what she's proposing, Mr. Rollins, is under Section 2-12, under Prohibitions and Term Limits, striking the last sentence, starting with "any counselor who has been finally convicted of a criminal offense involving misconduct," all the way to "position in the town." So that whole sentence at the end. Again, this is not addressing the gender neutral language that this ordinance is addressing, but she's looking to make...
I mean, it's a proposed charter change, so if you're, if that's what the amendment is, and it gets voted as an amendment, then it goes to the State House, and away you go. Even though that is clearly not the intent of what the, what you were trying to change in this particular amendment, it is an amendment to that particular section. So at the end of the day, this will have to go to the State House, and then would also have to go to the voters, and both would have to approve it. And that's assuming that you guys approved the amendment, so...
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chase.
Thank you. I think some of the members will recall that we have pending a charter amendment for the State House right now, for the state legislature. And actually, I think we have several. We have three, I believe. One of which is the inclusion of, in our charter, of a recall amendment. It would permit, under certain circumstances, elected persons to be subject to a recall by the voters. That particular proposed charter amendment has language that I think fairly closely mimics what we're now looking at and, under consideration from the council or to perhaps strike. So I think it would be inconsistent with what we expect already to be in process, hopefully to be, to be ratified by the legislature and then returned to us for, for the voters to approve at the ballot.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chase. So before we go any further on the amendment, Ms. Ellenberg is making that motion. Do I have a second on her motion by anybody? I do not see a second, so we will not move forward with that.
All right. I guess I withdraw the amendment proposal.
Okay. Thank you. So going back to the original ordinance as described, we had a first and a second to refer to advertising. Any further discussion on sending to advertising?
Wait, can I make a motion to amend? Because Ms. Ellenberg raised the section and highlighted where it says "him" that should be changed to "they" or "there," that is not written in within...
I see what you're saying in that, in that particular line.
It's actually in that same sentence, yeah.
Not even gender neutral there.
So the "him" should be struck in and changed to "held by..."
They or them.
They or them. "Held by..." What do you want to change that wording to? Them?
Them, yeah.
Them. So I have a motion just to strike "him" in that final line and switching it to "them." Second by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of striking "him" and replacing with "them," please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries on that. Again, any further discussion on the ordinance going forward? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending to advertising as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item, the Proposed General Ordinance DFY-25-007, Acceptance of MGL Chapter 33, Section 59, Military Service on Salary, Seniority, and Leave Allowances for Public Employees. Again, we're looking to refer this to advertising. Rules and Procedures did vote to recommend this at their last meeting on 11/13. This was introduced by myself, and again, this just gets the town up to speed on Mass General Law in regards to military service and regards to salary, seniority, and leave. Do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Second.
And to send to advertising.
Whatever.
And second for discussion. Any further discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending to advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And as described earlier from Mr. Chase's review with Rules and Procedures, we're not ready to entertain the last ordinance, so we'll postpone to the next meeting. And that ends legislation for action for this evening. We do not have any old business, but we do have a bit of new business. Order OFY-25-032, Acceptance of Non-Recurring Revenue to Capital Department of Corrections. I would ask our Town Manager for a description of this, please.
So this is monies from the state, which is not guaranteed in any year's budget, but is typically included to compensate communities that have prison facilities, correctional facilities in their, within their borders, for some of the impact of that. This year, the amount is $249,037.82, which is about $11,000-ish dollars less than last year.
$11,000 less.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second for discussion. Let me get a second for discussion. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon and Ms. Ellenberg.
For discussion, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Robinson. I assume you're the person that secured this funding, is that so?
I am, I am not. As I said, it's a, it's a formula that the state kind of keeps secret, not secret, but they don't guarantee it in the budget each year, and so how it is distributed is, I think, somewhat based on past practice and perhaps legislators from Bridgewater have advocated for it. That's typically a good thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
So I can take no credit.
Well, thank you for your honesty. Second thing is, I wanted to know, I know there has been discussion of the college and the prison kind of joining forces on water sewer issues, and this is prison money. I mean, could that go to a joining of things, thereby freeing water and sewer for our town?
We are certainly talking to the relevant parties, but I think these are two separate and distinct things.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any other questions to discuss before we sit? Okay. So we had a motion, a second to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So just to point a clarification, that would mean we would need to meet Budget and Finance prior to the next meeting?
If we want to bring it up to the next meeting, yes.
Okay, so I'll post that. It's just one item, so like, I don't know, 6:45?
Okay.
6:30? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll let Finance know.
All right. So that is all for new business. Brings us back to citizens' comments. Any citizens like to come up and speak? I will reiterate that due to Mass Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions, concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. If you'd like to come up, please state your name and address for the record and keep it to three minutes. Anybody like to come up and speak? Going once, first, in a while? All right. Very good. I will jump then to council comments. I will start with Mr. McKinnon on my right. Mr. McKinnon?
None for me tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Ellenberg?
None for me. I think I've spoken enough. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Murphy?
Just a quick, quick thank you to all the volunteers that put on Sunday's events, the parade and the event on the common. I know a lot of work goes into that. It was a great event, great day. A lot of good businesses came out, so just again, thank you to the volunteers who gave up their time to organize that event for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Lindy?
I would echo what Mr. Murphy just said and thank our youngest counselor, Mr. Murphy's son, who always marches with us in the parade. It was a lot of fun. As you can see outside on the common, I wanted to commend our council president for leading the Lions to decorate the town common, and for Winter Wonderful, for lighting up the common, and the library, and the new addition closer to the CVS parking lot. For anybody so inclined that hasn't had a meal tonight, they're doing a fundraiser for that right now as we speak at Barrett's. Barrett's gives 20%. I happen to have coupons if you want to go. I already went there. But it's all paid for by donations, so it's just nice. Our town looks just so nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, I would echo the comment with respect to the wonderful work that has been done by the Lions and many volunteers on the, on the common once again this year. It's an annual tradition that I think is well worthwhile, and certainly we look forward to it each and every year. And as well, the, the lighting by the Winter Wonderful, the Bridgewater Improvement Association, and I know Mrs. Merrily Hunt, of course, has been very active in that. And I just think it's wonderful that we once again have a, a really very attractive holiday display on our public common.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Strigles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to echo that the beauty of our common always shines brightest this time of year, and I do think that it's just a sentiment to the people and the residents of Bridgewater, continuously giving of their time and their finances to ensure that our town shines just as bright year after year after year. And I do want to thank my constituent for coming out this evening. We emailed twice, but we haven't gotten to connect yet, so I really look forward to connecting on the senior village housing issue so that I can best understand your concern. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my fellow councils on the day. It was really enjoyable. It was nice to see Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and I'd like to thank the Bridgewater businesses that come out. It makes it extra special to buy the food and to start your Christmas shopping, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Again, thank you to, to those councils that mentioned me. I appreciate it. I'm the Chair of the, of the Decorating for the Lions Club, but I did not do it by myself. I had a lot of volunteers that helped that Saturday after Thanksgiving, including members from Bridgewater Fitness Center, from the Bridgewater Business Association, and a few just other general volunteers that came that day. Obviously, many Lions members, it takes a village to set it all on up, and I just fine tune it here and there. But it's been going on for many, many years. We had a longtime member do it for about forty years, so he was about time to, for someone else to take the reins, which I stepped up and did. I want to thank the B B A for their Christmas on the common. They did a wonderful job from the start of the parade to the entire day's events. It was packed, you know, as we, as we saw in the parade, as we marched into that area. A lot of people came out for it, had a really ideal day. They had pony rides, they had food, vendors, they had axe throwing, they had all sorts of wonderful events to entertain people this year. So I want to thank them for a wonderful event, great way to kick off the, the holiday season, and, and again, just wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday season. It'll be here very quickly. So with that, I want.
President, one thing I forgot, just wanted to let people know on December eleventh, which I think is a Wednesday, the library's doing like an open house during the day with various different events and activities that are going on. A garden club is doing kids' greens and things like that. It's just a wonderful day. It's all on the library website.
Very, very good. Thank you. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon, a second. Mr. Chase, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.